We are calling the Selectmen's meeting to order on March 12th, 2018. Public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We have a 7:15 appointment with the Town Government Study Committee, and so we'll try to see what we can get done before that. March 5th, open session minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any comments or questions?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, okay. Last week, we had discussed, and I believe we had all agreed, that we would request the reserve fund transfers for legal expenses and public buildings. We needed to get this in place so we could actually meet expenses this week. So I indicated to the --
Motion to do this again?
No, no, I indicated to the auditor that, you know, my, you know, if the chairman can declare whether there's a vote or consensus, and there was consensus on those. We've asked for $11,000 on legal expenses, which we calculated, looking at monthly.
Through the end of the year?
That's through the end of the year.
Okay.
You know, and I would say, if we, you know, if we got some, you know, a fairly significant burn rate out of, for instance, the mediation, we might have to ask for another one, but I think this, we may probably be able to speak through with this, so.
Okay, good.
So that was $11,000 for that. And then, we further had a reserve fund transfer in the amount of $6,365. This is the additional amount that is attributable to the 1870 town hall. And this is the result of us taking, you know, that over, and we had already discussed we would take that over, so we simply took that amount from the payroll through the end of the year.
Okay, yep.
Okay. As I say, I think we had agreement on those points, that we were covering that payroll, and that we would ask for that. But I would ask, at this point, for a vote confirming those two reserve fund transfers.
I make a motion to confirm the vote.
Second?
Any comments or questions?
No.
All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is --
Do you want to hold on that?
Well, I mean, we could, but we only have the fire outstandingly correct at this point.
It doesn't, it, there's no rush. Do you want to do it for next week?
Yeah, we can hold it, because I'll try to, I did send him a note saying we really needed to get together with the storm and the lack of electricity. And then, having to go to Boston, I wasn't able to connect with him last week, so. Fiscal year 19 budget requests.
Holding.
Hmm?
It's holding.
Hmm?
There's only one left, and it's being held until after the --
Yep, okay. Okay.
Hold on.
Yep. I don't have anything further determinative on the, on the town meeting, whether to do it the way we did. I did mention it to the moderator, who, you know, so, so, yeah, you know, maybe, even I think we need to do something more formal. I would just, you know, just add, just caught him going from one thing to another, so. But we, actually, we'll put it out here, because, you know, one of the, you know, one of the issues is this town manager vote. When we were looking at this thing, there are, you know, there are quite a number of things. There's only low 40s articles total. But there are a number of things that, a couple of things that are, like, really big and don't fit anywhere else particularly. And I think even amongst the others, there are things that would take a lot of time. So one of the things that we were considering was to organize the town meeting so that we would have the sort of regular proceedings the first night. And the second night, we would begin with Community Preservation Act and Town Manager, because, you know, those are two, two big issues that people may be interested in. And doing it at, you know, the beginning of the evening would afford people, you know, the opportunity to know, you know, when to be there, and if people had childcare or whatever, they could do that. And then, on the second night, once we had done those two items, we would proceed with anything that was undone from the, from the previous night. As they say, I just, I sort of caught Barry at another meeting at church, and he was like, "Yeah, you know, it's just, but I'd, you know."
You've got to do the school early, is that what, you, we're doing the school early and they're doing the school late in Boylston, is that what --
Well, we were actually thinking of maybe doing that on the second night as well, because then, if there was a vote in Boylston --
Yeah.
Yeah. You're right. So, you know, so, you know, those three big things, you know, we thought maybe to, to do. First, we hadn't really sorted out the order of those, but, you know, structurally, we thought that might be a good idea. And so, as long as you guys are here, and, you know, your stakeholder is obviously, you've put a lot of work into one of the articles, and I wonder how you guys feel about that.
I like it.
I like it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I think the more predictable you are, the better.
Yeah.
Particularly with issues like these.
Yeah. And that way, you know, I mean, if we, if we get all the rest of the stuff done the first night, and we get it done at 10 o'clock, we go home at 10 o'clock, you know? I somehow suspect, given the rest of the stuff that's on there, we're not, but, um, but we can just pick those things up after we do the --
I think it would be good, because we'll cut the school a break, where they don't have to be in two places the same evening.
Yep, yep.
And they'd be exhausted, I would think, by the end of --
Yeah.
And it doesn't always work out, that they get over there, and they're sitting waiting, you know?
Oh, yeah. I mean, you know, their town meeting is as unpredictable as ours is, you know?
Right.
You're trying to juggle two unpredictable schedules, so. All right. I'm inclined to think that's what we're going to do, and we need to nail that down, I think, by next Monday, and --
Do you want me to help you get some information, or?
If you could talk to the school and see what their feeling was about that?
Okay.
I will certainly talk to Barry, and, you know, and say, "We talked about it again, and we've talked to this stakeholder." Have you, do you have any sense of how CPA feels about that?
Yeah, I think they're on board, too.
Okay. Because I was going to say Buzz had sent me another inquiry that I'd have to get back on, and I could ask him when I --
Yeah, I saw him on Saturday.
Okay. So he's, they're comfortable with that as well?
Yeah.
All right. I think with the majors, you know, confirming that that last major --
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they'll have a problem.
Stakeholder is good with that.
Probably going to get in.
Yes.
Yeah.
Unless they have something planned for that night or something.
And again, I just sort of ran a byberry to say, you know, we were, we were thinking about this, and he said, "Yeah, sounds like it." Okay. All right. So that's what we'll propose, try to pin down the moderator, and then we can finalize that next week.
Good.
All right. The, oh, yes, we have the, the letter from Berlin, Boylston, regarding the student walkouts. Do we have any interest in submitting something ourselves on that?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I thought your letter was very good, your draft.
I hadn't, and again, I was in Boston today, so I didn't know whether anybody had --
Oh, I did respond, but it was late.
Oh, okay. Yeah, and I, I didn't even have time to, I was home for about, like, 10 minutes, so I didn't even have time to check to see. But do people feel that that text was reasonable?
Yeah. I actually really liked it, because I liked that you offered suggestions as to a different way to do it, as opposed to just complaining, so.
Exactly. I thought it was very respectful, and --
All right.
You worded it in such a way that it's not going to cause a, a fire that we need to put out.
All right, let's see. Email. Are you able to forward that to Mary from your computer here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There was one slight typo, I thought, in there.
Oh, there might have been. I, um, yeah.
I'll fix it.
As I say, I, the first mistake I made was understanding when school vacation was, because I just looked at the 20th, and it seemed like that was, and then I actually looked at the calendar, and I was like, "No, not, not so." And then, I did make a mistake when I fiddled things in the second draft.
Did you find the same typo as I did?
Is it the "fee"?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm assuming it meant "a student see fit."
Yes.
That's what I was guessing, too.
That sounds like it.
Yep.
It said "fee."
All right.
Thought maybe it was the --
And then, um, yeah, we could print that out, and we'll pick up discussion on that then, after the 7:15 meeting. All right?
Okay.
I'll just actually load her on the side.
I'll grab one.
If y'all don't mind, I just didn't stand.
She just likes to be facing the camera.
Oh, geez. Give me a turn.
That's sad.
All right, solve that problem. Back you damned.
High five, Bill.
That's right.
Well, welcome. What have you guys been doing for the last year?
Nothing.
Nothing.
We've been having social meetings.
Social, yeah.
Cool, cool. I love it.
Same with us.
So, we understand that, yeah, you have a report.
Yes. Did you see it?
I read the report. I thought it was very good. Very good.
Well, Lisa gets a lot of credit for that, in terms of, in terms of --
I just edited it.
Well, but, but your assistance during this entire process, and, and helping us make large chunks of things, and articulate them in a way that made sense, and move it towards actually something that could become a document that somebody who wasn't on the committee could actually really understand. Very helpful. Really, really appreciate her time.
So what were your thoughts, I guess, after you read it?
Let me go back and look. It's been a while. Days ago. There it is. No, I think that just the planning of, you know, what the plan is, is --
Oh, right, of course.
-- you have on paper, or soft copy, or whatever, so that people understand what's going on.
And do you have copies for everybody?
And the different steps.
Two copies?
This is also helpful.
Oh, so you have one, all right.
I know that document very well.
I figured you did.
I think you were very thorough. This seems a lot bigger than the one I read. Add things?
The appendixes, yeah.
Oh, I didn't, yeah, I didn't have the appendixes.
I, um, I did, you know, I did, it seemed like the overwhelming number of responses, you know, to the survey was, were positive, was referred to this.
Very positive, 80 percent.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think that's, that's good, and it's obviously, um --
How many responses did you have?
158.
That's not bad.
That's not bad.
I think, considering it's a topic that, you know, you're sort of asking people questions when they don't maybe fully understand it.
Right. No, and I did note that some of them were answering like, "What?", you know, "What does it do?", and, you know?
So I think one of our plans is to sort of share this back with anybody that responded, so it's like, so, you know, it's a way to get this information back out into the community.
Right.
So that, you know, I think a lot of the questions, just like, who would it report to, and what would this be, and, you know, some of that still needs to get fleshed out.
Mm-hmm.
Of course, if we all answered it, that's seven of us. How many?
I mean, I don't know. I guess my view is that, you know, you know, we talked with you a few months ago, and that, you know, I think that there seemed, at that point, to be, you know, positive views from within-town government, and, you know, at that point, I don't think we had had our survey at that point and stuff. But I think, as we've continued to look at it, I mean, and you mentioned Town Manager, but we aren't calling it a Town Manager.
Yes, yeah.
Because I think, you know --
It's Town Management Study Committee, is that, sorry?
But, you know, we're focusing on it being an administrator, and I think, you know, there's still, you know, I think, I think we all, we all agree that the stepped approach that we were taking to sort of make sure everybody buys in before we go to a true formalizing of that, and we all sort of feel we have work to do in the next few weeks, to try to go back and talk to everybody, to, to the, to the town employees and department heads, and kind of say, like, "Okay, well, you look at this, too, and see what, you know, where does this fit?". Because I think there are those questions about, you know, the, the strength of it, the strength of the position, and that's where we still need more feedback from the Selectmen. I don't mean to speak for the group, but I guess I can.
Yeah.
To, you know, that we need some more specificity, you know? Part of what we need to deal with between now and then is to maybe dig into some more of job descriptions, but sort of getting your feedback, you know, where do, where are the things that you would like to see a town administrator have the ability to act? Because I think that's where the, that's where the differences are between managers, and there's all, there's all different articles and things written about it, but I think that's something that voters will want to understand, because that power aspect of hiring ability, appointing ability on your behalf, there's different ways to structure it, like, that would be a reason to go with a special act, if you wanted, you know, one of the examples we had have, we've talked about, was if you wanted a town administrator, and they find somebody to be able to appoint somebody to a committee if they think it's a good person, and, you know, leave it that the Board of Selectmen could say, "No", if there was a reason, "No", but otherwise, "It's a done deal, and it doesn't take up your meeting time", or however. So, I mean, those are things to think of, that you wouldn't have unless you did it via a special act. But, but to try to understand, you know, what some of those things would be before we get to town meetings, so it helps us articulate, you know, sort of flesh out some of those duties and responsibilities part more, so.
What do we spend a lot of time on here, our meetings?
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't have to be today. I think, you know, we need to meet with you again, but just to start thinking about, you know, what would you like to be able to see some, I mean, what are the things that frustrate you that, you know, you feel like, "Gosh, if somebody can just make that decision, somebody that, you know, understands it can make those decisions", and, you know, is finding somebody, like you said, you know, for, if there's somebody that's interested in an appointment, instead of letting a person get away, say, "Yeah, you're appointed", kind of thing, if they've interviewed them and they think that makes sense? I don't know. I mean, that's just one example, but maybe it's, I mean, how far, you know, as far as contracts, or, you know, approving certain things, you know, can they, can they act on their own? And then, it's more of a follow-up. I think, you know, it's sort of like the same issue of, like, this, the school committee and a superintendent, you know, how much, how much, you know, the superintendent has a lot of, you know, the school committee makes policy, and they act on it. So maybe it's not as strong in that sense, but, but where is the line? And I think that's, that still may come, I think, if approved, that people want it to really define it, but I think people are going to want to have a sense of that.
Did you get any sense in talking with people, what kind of message we got when we were looking at the Fire Chief position? That a stronger position would be more attractive to people, or a weaker position would be less attractive to people? Did you get any sense?
To people, as in first candidates, or just staff?
As far as candidates, yes. Most, yes. Even the candidates that aren't people, yes.
I think, I think the answer to that is, is yes. I mean, this is, this, certainly the people we have talked to, the people who are currently incumbents, or have been incumbents in these positions, are very aware of the responsibility and authority levels in positions, and look, and are very aware of the potential holes and the places that they will get stuck when they're trying to conduct business for the town. And the first priority, at my, as I have read this, is that we need to be clear. That's the first thing.
Yep, I get that. Yep.
Ambiguity is bad.
Bad.
Straight up. And, and the second piece is figuring out how to give this person enough authority to do the things that we want them to do without chasing away maybe current incumbents in positions who feel like they're very good at their job and know what they're doing, and be able to work effectively with the people who are here, and move everybody together towards more effective and efficient uses of town resources.
The one thing that came across strongly was people didn't want an administrator who would be a micromanager, or strongly authoritarian. They wanted somebody who they could work with, who'd get the group together as a team. And that's one of the things we'll do, probably in the next round, is not only what would you like to see the town administrator do, but what would you be willing to give up?
As, as part of your jobs?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think there was a, there was a really good report that, I don't think, I think we referenced it in here a few times, and probably would be a good report to just kind of read through, it was from a few years ago, about authority and leadership in these types of roles. And it, and it definitely said that there is a correlation, that the, you know, the more authority you give a position, the ability to be more of a leader, the, it actually said, it's almost conversely, that the more you actually create a stronger position, you actually get more efficiencies out of your town, and people work stronger under that. I mean, I think there's, I think there's a concern, because we haven't had one, or people that haven't worked for it, that they don't want to see it, that you get somebody that's a, you know, power hungry, or has all this authority over hiring and firing, but I think that there's a happy medium, and it also affect, the, a level of authority also impacted, I think, as Beth was saying, the happiness of people in the position. So if the goal is to be able to retain somebody, and, you know, not always be a stepping stone we're always looking to replace, that that's where the issues of, you know, having a, having a appropriate salary, but also the appropriate authority level. And the other reason for imbuing it, too, is, you know, you three are the Selectmen today, but if that changes, and the job, and the, and the job for a, for a town administrator changes because the Board of Selectmen changed, and now their authority is no longer because there's different personalities that have a different view, that's why it's important to imbue that with very special language, to have it very clear, like, you can appoint, you can do this, you can act, or you do manage these people, or you don't manage these people, and it's not, it's not just like up to somebody's whim as to, "Oh, I don't like that today", and that's how you lose, you lose people, so.
And in some of the things that you talked about, was there anything, because to my mind, I thought we could fit most of what we're doing in existing structures. I didn't, without getting too, you know, far into the weeds about it, I, I didn't particularly see a need to parse what we were doing by special act, but I'd be interested if you guys thought that there were some things that --
I think what Wayne is saying is that --
The appointing authority, they wouldn't be able to do that unless you do a special act, because that's your authority.
There's certain things you can't give up.
Right.
And if it seemed appropriate to give certain things up.
Yes.
The special act is the route to the fault.
No, I understood, but I, I guess when I looked at it, I didn't see particular problems with not giving up the things that were, yeah, I don't know.
The other issue, the Department, Division of Local Services and Department of Revenue is, they are, their current position is that special acts are the way to go, because bylaw changes are easily undone, and potentially, this person is going to have to do some unpopular things. And a bylaw change could be brought up to remove the position.
Yeah, it just becomes a more serious process with the special act.
No, no, I recognize that, yes.
And I think our feeling is that it, it needs to be taken very, very seriously in terms of the authority and the responsibilities that you shift over to this individual.
And I, and I think the clarity about the financial, you know, the financial responsibility for budgeting and things like that, like, who's responsible, I mean, right now, it, you know, we know from past history, sometimes the Finance Committee takes the lead, sometimes the Selectmen have taken the lead. So if you want this position to have that authority, then it's important to spell that out, and, so that that doesn't get undone and changed, or, so. I don't mean to step on your toes, but that was something that kind of came into mind, is, you know, it might, I mean, I mean, you know, a lot of people look at it, that, you know, you know, the town's running fine, why do we need that? You know, kind of thing.
No, no, and actually, I, no, but your point's a good one, about making it more difficult to undo. What I was, what I was really looking at is that, under the existing law, would seem to me, we could give away anything that we wanted to give away via bylaw, but you make, you make a good point about the difference between --
I was sort of cutting across the material in a different way.
But another three Selectmen could have a very different view, and very quickly change what that is.
Yeah.
And I, and I mean, and I think we've all sort of viewed it, that, you know, this is an investment.
Well, we can't change bylaws, but --
No, but it's, it's an easier process for whatever, you know? If you have an ax grinder for, for a particular reason, we've all seen that at different points, and if, you know, it would, it might be easier to do that. So I think the other, you know, the other issues, too, is just, you know, just figuring out, you know, what, what makes the most sense as far as, you know, oversight, or, you know, HR, or, you know, those, I mean, I think that it, I don't know, there's just, there's just a lot, there's a lot to it.
There certainly is.
And I think, and I think it's just an investment. I think we sort of looked at it, that it's an investment of the town to make sure that, you know, the town stays the way we've, you know, been able to build it under, with a lot of volunteerism. I mean, and I think the biggest issue is that things, you all know, I'm not telling you anything, how much more complex things have gotten, and so, you know, that expectation that, you know, the next person's going to come in and have that, and so it's, you know, that's the glue that you're, you're investing in, and you want to make sure it sort of sticks.
Mm-hmm.
I think people's biggest concerns from a negative was just the turnover. I mean, there was the salary aspect, but there was the turnover, the impermanence of it, you know, being a stepping stone.
And the possibility that we hire the wrong person.
Yeah. And so that's a part --
Always to ask.
And that's an actual other part that they talked about, you know, by doing a special act, is putting in the, to define the process by which you hire, to a degree, so it's, so it doesn't, so you're, so you can talk about, do you have a committee, or, you know, or how, how is screening go, or what's, what's the discipline area, like, how do you, you know, remove a person? One of the comments that was made by Division of Local Services, when talked to them, is you could say, "Well, you need a supermajority of a Board of Selectmen", especially if you went to a position where the Selectmen got expanded to five, so it would take more than just three. So, so there's just things like that, because I think, you know, this, we've all seen the politics that can happen, and we've seen that there are, there are other towns that are struggling with that, that there are, there's dysfunction going on because of personalities at times, so.
And even just from the hiring, firing standpoint, some of these committees do this, or communities do this, and then they don't know how to actually hire the person because they have no process.
Right. No, and we actually put money in Selectmen's budget, $10,000, to support that process over the course of the next fiscal year, so. Basically, you know, basing that on expenditures and support that we've required in the past, like, looking at the Police Chief, looking at the Fire Chief, et cetera, thinking it would be, you know, at least of the same order. Good.
I think another part we need to talk about, not at this meeting, is just about, like, org chart, where does it fit? Because there's been different issues about, where does the safety, heads of the Safety Department, do they report directly to, do they report through? How does that, that's what we want to talk to those department heads, but also get your views on how that works.
Yeah.
Because I think, we've heard a lot, that a lot of things happen is because people don't have somebody to turn to on a daily basis for support, so what does that look like, and what kind of stability does that give?
We're certainly talking about trying to centralize as opposed to decentral, I mean, we're so decentralized now, but if you look at different charts from different communities, there really are a variety of options. And then, and when we begin to look at ours in terms of, you know, you've got library trustees, and boards of assessors, boards of health, that, you know, all have authority over certain types of individuals that work for the town.
Right, and that don't run through the selectmen even today, so, yeah.
But that's something that a special charter could change, you know?
Trying to figure out exactly how much centralization is appropriate at this time, and be able to write it in such a fashion that it doesn't tie us, you know, down to too permanent a solution, that sort of thing. It'll, that's where having council would be helpful. And we've got a lot of good, I mean, because there are so many towns, almost all the towns are ahead of us, it's, there's a lot of examples to choose from. And the folks from, you know, the state and the central mass have been real helpful, like, they know how to identify real good town administrators and use them as examples. And the folks, well, the gentleman that you brought in from Middleborough or whatever was...
That was Paul.
Paul, yeah.
He was great.
You know, he was, and he's tied into that network of town administrators as an organization, and said he'd be perfectly willing to help us a lot as we go along if we choose to, so.
Well, what, what meetings do you guys think we need between now and town meeting? I mean, you spoke about talking to department heads. Do you want the selectmen there?
We haven't gotten quite that far. We definitely wanted to be with you three, is just to really sort of think through some of the more detail about, you know, how does it, where's the balance between, you know, Mary's position and your position?
Yes, and it's all because I've been working with Mary to define, you know, a catalog of the many administrative tasks that, you know, roost in her chicken coop right now here, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think you might be, you know, important in a couple. You know, one of the recommendations was just, you know, and some of these are to deal with before, Tommy is like, you know, just clarifying the financial oversight and budget preparation, I mean, you know how that's working now, or how it's been working, so how would you, you know, there's different, there's different ways where they become more the budget, what's the right term?
Coordinator.
Budget coordinator, you know, and making sure that that makes sense to the finance committee too. I mean, you know, there's still a point of maintaining independence, but, you know, but then there's also the making sure that, you know, everything has been thought through and sort of talking that, you know, how does that work with the treasurer and those aspects too? So, you know, that oversight aspect of, you know, so just sort of being able to understand that, because I think none of us want to get there and be like, oh, well, this is, you know, and like, everybody starts asking, well, what does that mean? It's like, well, you have no clue.
Right.
Because they won't approve it if they don't have at least a sense, so I think, you know, so I think it was that...
Do you think we need a town officers' meeting in a week or two before to, you know, hopefully have had a, you know, a number of these other conversations before that, and then maybe last week of April or so, having a town officers...
I think we need the pod, the individual pods in there.
Well, and you may very well find that there's a number of items on the warrant that would be accommodated by having that type of discussion. It may make sense.
Yes, yeah, I think you may be right.
Because this is a little more complex town meeting than some of them lately.
I think that's probably a good idea, is maybe have half the meeting dedicated to this, and half the meeting dedicated to other warrants issues.
Oh, that'd be good. I don't know, in regard to the meetings that we have with other staff, it's probably unlikely that we're all going to meet as a committee with everybody that we're going to meet with, we're going to divide that up. Now, we haven't talked about it, there may be some value in having one of you sit in on some of those, just because of the nature of the relationship that you and they have already, and it might be easier for us to understand it if we get both sides at the same time. I don't think it's going to...
Each of us are, each of us have liaison responsibilities to different departments.
Right.
I'm fire, she's police, she's highway.
So we can talk about that some more, but that might make some sense.
And so, that might make sense for you to meet with the liaison and add about that. That's a good idea.
Because then it doesn't, and we can get a lot more done that way, and we'd get your input at the same time.
Yeah, and I'm hearing, you know, that department's input firsthand, so.
And that list is up on the web.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think the goal is to get, it's not many weeks, scarily, goes by fast, but, but to have the individual meetings, have maybe a group one, but then be able to then have a public hearing to sort of figure out what all those, what all the town employees, you know, as a group have said, okay, well, now looking at what this looks like and how it might fit, like, we all are, you know, agree, and this is, so it's sort of a precursor to town meeting, I don't think that we're going to be able to get up and explain everything, but I think our goal is to...
Well, we could do that in the last selectmen's meeting before town meeting.
You know, to be able to just...
I mean, you know, have it, that be a forum.
Yeah.
That be a forum.
Yeah, I just think that there's a good, I think it may be false, that it kind of makes sense, because there was a lot of interest when we had it at 19 Carter Street, but there was a lot of questions about this, and I think we just, there still will be, maybe even after...
But I think, and there's, I mean, I think we need to be clear, we're not, this is, we're not in a position to present a job description, we're looking for approval of the basic concept to move forward, so there are going to be some open questions, a bunch of open questions.
Very high level structural decisions and a decision to move forward and not on that basis.
But to understand some of the duties and stuff like that, because the issue is if there's a good understanding of the duties, then they know what we're going forward with, and then boiling down, and if people say, no, we don't agree with that, then there's still time between that approval and what we finally write to kind of work those kinks out, but I think there's got to be a starting point to say...
No, absolutely.
No, I know you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, and it's also, I mean, it's also bona fide as we developed to say, okay, this is the basic, you know, structure at 30,000 feet, and we're inclined to this at 20,000 feet. When we get down to 10,000 or 15,000 feet, you know, in a second stage, we are going to work on this, this, and this, so as you say, we don't have to have every, every question answered. And that's a good thing, because there's no way we're going to get all those questions answered anymore at town meetings.
The other thing, the other thing I think that it does is it helps to clarify the need and the why, which was the other question that came up a lot at the forum was, why do we need this? Everything's running along smashingly, isn't it? So...
Smashingly is a good ad...
Says the group of people who haven't had significant contact with town government, and yet haven't served.
And that came out strongly in serving, too. Came out very strongly, you know, everything's running fine, why do we need it? That was next to, how much are we going to pay him? And that was probably the biggest objection.
Yeah, when you're looking at it, and it's defined out, you can look at it and go, oh, wow, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, and sort of even be able to come to, as a group, like, what do you think that that would be in the market, maybe, based on the stuff that we've looked at, would be finalized, but...
And to be able, and for the town employees to be able to say, yes, we, we support this, and here are the things, literally the specific things this person can do for me at the meeting, we actually, we were joking about, we could just sit with y'all and go through your email, and is this, is this something I should answer, or something that a town manager should have dealt with already? You know, and literally, you know, the last 500 emails you got, how many of them really should you have dealt with?
Yeah, I guess I would say if you look at page seven in the report, it really sort outlines the role, and it breaks it down into the four components of financial management, day-to-day personnel, and financial policies and planning, and it sort of gives descriptors of like, these are the general categories, but I think people sort of want a little bit more concrete examples of like, what are those things? So between now and then, this, these aspects of like, but what does that mean? Because they don't necessarily feel there's disfunction, because they don't see how long things take, or, you know, whatever there is, or, you know, when it comes to budget season, things don't go as smoothly, and maybe they could go smoother, or however, so, but I'm not sitting in all these things either, so I don't have all the examples, so if you, and that's part of, I think, what we want to talk to about with the different department heads, is like, okay, well, you know, personnel administration, I mean, I'm sure the accountant and treasurer, and you all have different aspects that you'd be like, oh, please take this off our plate and manage this, so, you know, but this just says administer, and so, you know, there's no pain points here, this just says administer the town's personnel policies, and I'm sure there are lots of people in town that have no idea how personnel works right now in town. So just being able to, I would say that's one part that we've talked about, so. So that's an area to think about, I would say, before we meet.
No, that's good. And this would be a good one to go through my last 500 emails and say, okay, are there things that aren't listed here?
Right.
You know, or...
When you only meet once a week as a board, there are things that have to be taken care of in between.
Right, but if you don't, but if you don't, but if you don't, but if you don't vest that person with the power to do some of those things, like, you might say, if we hire the right person, and they're experienced, and they have all that knowledge, yeah, they could do it. I mean, you know, are they going to be perfect? No, nobody's perfect, but, you know, you make, then you like, make the adjustment and say, next time, do it this way, like you would with any employee, and, you know, but, but you've given them that ability to act, because I think that's what we've seen, is the ones that are hamstrung, they're not happy in their role, and then they'll move, and I don't think we want that.
Just to ask about the special act, do you find, did you find that towns that did not do the special act are the ones having issues?
Uh, yes and no, I mean, if you don't, if you don't, if you don't build it with the right authority, you can, I mean, I think Aire just went back and just modified, I think they had something and they modified it recently to make it stronger.
A special act?
I believe it was a special act. They just passed several, I don't know if they'd had it, I don't know how they had it before, but we've seen other ones increase the authority over time, so.
And hiring the right person is so important.
Well, I mean, we've seen situations where, you know, looking at other towns where they don't have one, and you don't really hear there's a process, and all of a sudden somebody's in the role, and you're like, wow, that was kind of weird, you know, so there's, I mean, we've seen some written reports about what's going on.
Which was the one who had gone through the whole process and approved it, and then never hired anybody?
Of North Brookfield.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that was one.
In 2007.
Since 2007, they've had it and they haven't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, and the towns that don't seem to have it that we talked to, I mean, that was sort of put in here, but it seems that they haven't had a process like this. They sort of like, oh, we need a town administrator, and it goes before town meeting without a lot of forethought, and it gets shot down. So that, so that's the reasons that the ones, even the ones that are about our side, they kind of are feeling the pain, but it hasn't, or you've got somebody that's done on a board of selectmen for a long time, and likes to have that control in town, and maybe they aren't pushing it forward, so I don't know if that's one of you guys. I just think, we just think it would lighten the load, so. Yes. So this, this issue about the town policies, did we want to talk about that?
Yeah.
This, this three about organizing the town policies, because there's the community compact, or page 16, or, we had talked, one of the things that we had talked about with one of the town administrators was that, you know, she's buried in her coming on board because the town did not have its policies and procedures organized and all that stuff. So Tim, we had talked about the community compact, and he had been talking to Central Mass Planning, and so that, so even if, you know, even though it might take time, if this is approved by the voters to, you know, go to the next step, this is something that could be done in the interim that would help us, no matter what the, it probably makes sense to do regardless of whatever the decision would be. So I don't know much more about that.
Yeah, so the, we're eligible to apply again for community compact funding, and if, if you hadn't had any other ideas about possible options, one of them that was suggested to us by the Central Mass Commission was, after this conversation with Margaret from Rutland, who's the town administrator there, is that, you know, we could very well apply for some funding. So we've thrown some ideas at Central Mass, and they've begun to formulate a proposal with the notion that...
To collect and compile policies and procedures.
Right, and they've spoken to the folks that run the community compact, and they have an open ear on that end, so they felt comfortable with the notion that if you guys said, you know, why not, you know, it's good to keep the community compact lines going, and, you know, that opportunity's there, and it would help, I think it would help us to some degree in structuring ideas as we move forward, and it would help the town regardless of what happens, and it would, if we move forward with the town administrator position, it helps that individual when they come in, because, you know, just, you know, you had some ideas, and Margaret had some ideas, and we had some ideas, and, you know, you begin to list those, and you come up with, you know, a number of good areas that...
Still policies, I think that was one, you guys are saying, you know, who makes those decisions?
Yeah.
I mean, that might be something you say, like, you know, town administrator gets to do that, and you don't all have to get phone calls, you trust that person's...
So if you folks felt comfortable with that, we could proceed with a proposal and come in and share it with you, and get your approval one more time, and then get it to the state.
I'm certainly comfortable with that, and I think it's useful.
Yeah.
Useful, so no matter where we go.
Just updating policies and replacing the ones that are...
Well, it's, to some degree, it's just trying to assemble, identify what's there, assemble it into an orderly fashion, begin to look at problems that might occur, conflicts that might occur between different policies, and then try to outline how to strengthen some of those, so.
Absolutely.
It, it seems like it helps everybody.
We've done that on school committee, we're policy subcommittee and have done it, or we actually paid MASC to update our policies.
Yeah, this would hit the HR piece too.
Mm-hmm. Yes, that could be a good project, regardless.
I'm all for that.
Well, they should be able to finalize a proposal pretty quickly, and then we'll get it to you guys, and we'll look at it some more, and we could maybe get it in by the end of March or something.
That sounds good. Is there anything else that you would particularly like us to look at in this report?
What was the link that you mentioned? You know what page, or just do what the link is?
It's referenced...
It's for the number six, I believe, is the one you're referring to.
What?
The Chief Executive Structure Massachusetts Towns.
Yeah.
The relationship between authority levels and leadership opportunities, I can actually, I can send you the link, it's available online, I can get you...
Okay, cool. That would be good. It's just good, they did a lot, and it really talks about, it actually, we had it in here, but it's really confusing unless you really read the whole report, it really talks about duties that different towns give to town administrators, and, you know, whether that makes it a strong or a weak position, and what, so it really helps you really think about some of those aspects.
No, that would be very helpful.
It's really good.
Before we have these follow-up conversations, to be able to at least read, skim through that would be helpful.
Yeah, I thought it was really informative.
Okay, so, timeline. Just, I have an envelope here, and I'm going to write on the back.
Well, we'll try the last...
What's the town meeting is?
Seventh or seventh.
Seventh and eighth.
Yep, so it looks like the seventh and eighth.
So we need to do a public forum.
So, the 30th would be the selectmen's meeting before that, and we had talked about, you know, setting aside at least, you know, a substantial portion of that, maybe 45 minutes or an hour or so, to, to have what could be considered a public hearing on it, but the, you know, selectmen's meeting could be the forum for that, that makes sense, all right? All right. Okay.
Does that include the, did you say that included the different department heads?
No, I'm walking back from, I'm walking back from town meeting, you know, to see, you know, to see where we are. So, we had talked about doing a officers and department head meeting ahead of that.
Yeah.
So the two, it's the week of the 23rd, the week of the 16th would be the two weekends before that. The weekend of the 23rd is a school vacation week. I don't know how much that affects department heads and so on.
We don't, I homeschool.
I know you don't.
You're looking at...
Other people might be away.
You never, you never give her a school vacation, I understand that.
Yeah, you're the anti-Betsy DeVos, the anti-DeVos.
That's a department, no.
The question would be, does that meeting happen before or after we're meeting with, like, each department head?
I would be inclined to have it after, and that's why I'm mentioning it, walking, you know, walking backward. So it would seem to me we would want to have that...
I think the two is, though, in case there's stuff we have to address before we had a public forum.
So the 16th, and that would be, or the week of the 16th. Yeah, that makes sense to me.
That is school vacation week.
No, that's the week before school vacation week.
And that would give us the...
No, she's right, it's the week before. 16th is Patriot's Day, that's...
Oh, it is?
Yes.
I have to rewrite that letter, because it was right.
Did you do it again? Okay.
I thought the 23rd was school vacation week, it's not.
No, potentially Patriot's Day.
Patriot's Day week.
Yeah.
Yeah, Patriots' Day is the 16th.
I was right the first time.
I have that all across my calendar.
Okay, so, I mean, certainly, it, having it on the, we can't do it on the 16th because of the state holiday, but having it on, like, the 17th is not a problem for me. I don't know how many department heads it would be a problem for. I don't-
You can poll them.
Yeah. Let's tentatively say the 17th for that. That would be the Tuesday the day after Patriots' Day. And we can go back over this one. Okay, so that would be Officers and Department Heads, okay? All right. And so, that would mean today we are talking about the 12th. So I think what we're talking about is this week, the week of the 19th, the week of the 26th.
So we'd need a meeting with you in there as a group to talk more about your, I mean, do you want us to start meeting with the individual departments first, do you think? Like, with you each as individuals with them to sort of maybe flush out, like-
I think that's probably the first thing to do. Okay, so.
What was the groups that we had laid out in our, cause we had a discussion last week as far as what ones we needed to meet with within our minutes?
Fire Chief, Police Chief, Income.
Finance Committee and Capital Planning, Treasurer and Accountant, and then Selectmen, and then Board of Assessors. We talked about Library Trustees and Public Safety as well.
Okay.
Right. Library Trustees do not have a meeting schedule.
So one would be-
So I would say, just, just putting this out there, if we, if you met with the Selectmen again on the second, okay, and then we tried to do those other meetings between now and the second.
Yeah.
That make sense?
Yeah. April 2nd is this?
Yeah.
I'm not here.
Yeah, okay. That's right. You're, but, and when do you get back?
Uh, the 4th.
The 4th.
We've got the 29th.
Well, I mean, we, we don't have to do this, we don't have to do that on a Monday night. We could do it.
Yeah. I'm just saying, this is not, I mean, I can add to the conversation, but it's not like, I don't know the topic.
No, and it's, and it's not like, I think it'd be good to have it at a meeting that's not this particular meeting where you have your business to be done. It could just-
So why don't we do it, you wanna do it Thursday the 5th?
If you've got flexibility.
That's it.
Okay, we'll do the 5th. The meeting with the Selectmen. Okay? Yeah, okay. Um, all right, so that would mean that we have between now and the 5th to organize meetings with that list of department heads. And the suggestion would be that you coordinate with the liaison and we can give you the list of liaisons to meet with those.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So that make, I mean, is that a reasonable timeline?
Yeah.
Well, it's a timeline we've got to work with.
Yes, you know, reasonable. There's always some context here.
Yeah. I mean, even though we don't have a job description, too, I think part of our plan this time is to start to look at some more of what other towns have been doing and some of the special, so to understand, like, what are they doing to say, does that stuff start to make sense? So. But yeah, anything you can do.
Mary, did you get that timeline now?
Yeah, but anything you can do to flesh them out.
The April 17th is also Selectmen's Night, so you'd just be having a Town Officers Meeting during the Selectmen's Meeting because a Patriots' Day moves to Tuesday.
Yes, absolutely. I think that's fine. And what we can do is, you know, maybe have the Town Officers Meeting at 7:30 and try to get our administrative stuff out of the way to the extent possible, um, between 7:00 and 7:30. Try to keep other appointments off that, that week. Okay? All right.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's a race. All right. But I think those, those, those steps and, thank you, will, would, while, while everybody is here, while you're here, anybody mind signing my nomination papers?
Sure.
You didn't bring his papers when you came? I just got them tonight. I make them sign things.
Yeah.
I could have that thing taken here for you.
I'm sure. So Lisa, we wanna try to get this up on the town website.
Yep. I was just waiting for you to approve it, and then I'm not sure if Garth is out of the country again, but if he's here, I will, tomorrow I can-
Yeah, so we will, because then we can share it out and try to get it back.
Just point people to the link as opposed to emails.
Do I have the most updated copy now?
You have-
With the appendix and all that.
Because I think, I think what I, what I sent to Mary was the full document.
Yeah. Cause I just think the more people start to see it, the-
Definitely. Well, I wanna, I wanna have him put up the section for the town meeting, so it should go under there, so.
Right. Potentially, we should, we should also do a, like, pull out the two or three, like, things. We actually want people to read, you know, for the people who go, ah, it's 88 pages, I'm not going to touch this.
Quick summary?
Yes.
The executive summary.
It's 88, some, some large numbers.
Thanks very much.
Continue our meeting and-
Thank you for making the copy. I'm gonna take that second copy with me, cause I was making notes as we were talking. So, thank you. All right. Well, I just discovered some news that affected that, the suggested text for the letter.
Yeah, thank God, huh? Thank goodness we've got that, huh?
Yeah. No, cause I looked at it and I thought it was that, you know, third full week.
I didn't even look at the calendar. I probably could've told you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't even pay attention to that stuff, so.
Yeah. And it's been a long time since I've had somebody in school, so I just looked at it and thought, oh, it's the third, you know, that third full week, which would be-
So it says same before, just after?
Hmm?
Just after Columbine? Is that the reference that you-
I need to take a look at it because I think we need to, I may need, we may need to fiddle with it, um, a little more than that. And maybe just the-
I can send it back to you.
So I have to correct that. That, um, do you think I should describe what this is so that the studio, the home audience has-
Sure.
All right. Just so, so people who may be listening and can understand, we, the Selectmen, you know, received a number of inquiries and expressions of concern regarding a superintendent's schools letter dated March 2nd that addressed the participation in a number of upcoming events related to gun violence in schools. Um, the Selectmen felt individually and coming together as a board that this is an important issue and it's an important event. And that it's important to support and nurture and empower, um, student participation and student solidarity with their students around, around the country. And so we, uh, we wanted to, to compose a letter that, that addressed some of those, some of those issues. We haven't, but we haven't finalized it yet because I was charged with just doing a sort of draft and outline draft of what, what we were, what we might suggest. And this is the first time that we're considering it as a board. Um, we, we did make a couple of substantive suggestions. We suggest that, um, at some point in mid-April to coordinate with the sad anniversary of Columbine, that there be an event that be planned with a high degree of student participation. And that might include the following items. Presentations by local law enforcement on gun laws and/or school safety measures. Presentation on the construction and the application of, um, of the Second Amendment and the ability of states at this point under prevailing law to, um, regulate, uh, the use and possession of firearms. Um, and presentations by students and perhaps a memorial ceremonies, you know, those are components that we think might be, uh, might, might be useful. Um, we note that in the March 2nd letter, the superintendent indicated the intention of the school department to impose normal sanctions, which I believe are detention for walking out and missing a portion of school. We note in the letter that that comports with applicable constitutional law because the sanction is for missing school, it's not for the content of, of the activity. And the activity is not subject to sanction that is more severe because of its content than any other absence or unauthorized leaving of school or classes. But we also suggest that, um, if we plan a mid-April, and I think we, we all feel it'd be good to have the broader community and, you know, the students available in doing that, that the attendance at that be voluntary for students and that students who volunteered, um, to, voluntarily attended, um, would, uh, would, would have the, the detention removed. So that this is, you know, sort of an alternate service, going in and participating in this kind of, of assembly. So that's, that's the basic outline of the letter. We need to fiddle just a little bit with specific, some specific language and some dates. But we intend to issue that, this letter in, you know, in the next day, in the next day or so. Is that fair synopsis of what's in there?
Very much. I guess I'd also just like to note that based on the information that I could find, we were the only school in our district who was imposing penalties for the walkout. Many were concerned with safety and those types of things, but there were no penalties to be imposed if the kids chose to take part in the activity.
And again, we recognize that, I mean, this, the, the letter came out only on March 2nd. It took a little while to percolate to the Selectmen. Uh, our, our last meeting was March 5th, which was the Monday, and this letter had been issued the, the Friday. So that we really, we really are only in a position at this point to, to respond to it. We recognize our letter is going to go out a day or so, a day before the 14th event or even on the 14th event, which is why we're suggesting in it, um, an alternate and if you will, sort of retroactive possibility for correcting that policy. Um, so there we have it.
Would you like a motion to?
Yeah, to issue the letter. And, you know, I can make the, you know, if you like, I can make, and then, you know, submit for you the, the very small sort of-
Yes.
Um, administrative changes that need to be made to this and get this around.
Okay. I'll make that motion to send the letter once the changes are made.
Yep.
Second?
All right. Any further comments or questions?
No, I think it was a very respectful letter and I appreciate you drafting it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, and I mean, we, we recognize the, you know, the authority and we recognize the concerns of the School Committee and the Superintendent. But again, we also feel that this is, um, it's an important issue and it's important to deal with students with respect and encouragement, um, as they embark upon, uh, what I hope will be a long life of political activism. All right.
Wanna make a motion? Do you wanna?
Yeah, I think, second, we'll take the vote.
I think we're gonna need approval.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Town Office Closure Policy Review. Um, I was not, again, I was in Boston today, so I wasn't able to audit the emails.
Well, am I the only one with this?
Um, Tom has a copy of it.
Yeah, and I have it online. I just made some notes, just-
Yep.
It looks like one of the only issues was that not everybody got a certain phone call. Was that the Wednesday morning phone call?
Um, I think there were a couple of issues with the call. I think it came later than we would have hoped, but we weren't really prepared, since this was our first outing, for a two-day event.
Right.
And the snow was cleared, so we didn't, we didn't even think about the power outage.
Right.
Obviously, we need to just sort of, you know, if the event is continuing, follow-up call.
Yes.
So that people get notified.
I had, like, two or three phone calls from National Grid, but I didn't get them until my power came.
Isn't that funny? Yes. Yes.
Telling me and updating me.
Yep.
So if the event is continuing, another scheduled call before the time of the, um, the ending of the previous closure.
Should we, should we send out the list of, to people who have phone numbers and make sure they're updated?
The same, I think the same process as the first, yeah, as the first call.
Just make sure that they have the correct phone number, or do they? You, you probably haven't really heard.
Well, I think, um, you had put Richard Sardell's on there, I thought?
That's their home number.
Okay, so maybe there's another number that's better.
They don't have a cell number.
Didn't have a cell number. Okay, then I guess that's sort of the best we can do, unless they have another number to give.
Yeah.
So, um-
Yeah. I think-
Other than that, I think it worked pretty well.
Yeah, no, and I mean, I think the chief put out a note that, uh, the chief police put out a note that we were without power and known the fire chief did as well, but we, I think we just needed to have gone out with that.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes. So I think, I, I think the only thing we need to do this time is to, um, be aware, and if there is something that extends the reported closing, we need to report that, whether that's way more snow than we expected, or, you know, snowing later, or whether it's power.
Right.
Um, I think it's as simple as that, really.
I agree.
Okay.
And then there was one question about, you know, perhaps we should message the whole town about the office closure.
Right.
I know from talking to Chief Galvin that he recommends pretty strongly against that because we really wanna be using that messaging system for the whole town only when there's a major emergency for the whole town.
But we put it on, we put it on Facebook, right, after we?
Yeah, I did.
Yes. Um, and we can post it to the website. But Mary was very nicely, I, I emailed her basically as soon as I got off the, off the phone, you know, on Thursday morning to let her know. And then she took it upon herself with, and with thanks for putting it, you know, sort of immediately on Facebook. So that would help.
And we may wanna consider a central point of, like, since someone down there is sending out the call and putting it on the police thing, we may wanna do the administrator for somebody down there, cause they can easily just share their post while they're doing, it takes another two seconds if you're doing the post to share it to the other account. So we may wanna give whoever's putting that post up the ability to share it on our town.
You mean the Facebook post?
Yeah.
So it gives the town access to the town's Facebook post, give it to the police department.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
I think that makes sense, cause then you have that central location for emergency notification.
No, that's fine.
Rather than having bunches of different people doing it.
That's fine.
I think that was it.
Yep, all right. And I presume we need to arrange another call tomorrow morning.
Yes.
Which I was unable to do today. Um, Mary, do you mind going out with an email saying, to the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief?
And Keith.
And Keith. And indicate that we will have a call tomorrow morning at 6:45, cause policy says we should tell people by 7:00. Okay? And I can.
Are you doing this as a conference call from your home?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And let me.
And I'm assuming you'll send it tomorrow.
I'll give it to the chiefs tonight. They'll have it tonight. So they can post it tonight.
Hopefully, they're expecting it since we just did it last week, huh?
Yeah, I presume. Yeah, I mean, we said this was the policy, and we'd have the call.
The Facebook post, the administrative stuff, we'll have to do that after this one, probably.
You don't think that the Kevin Columbine can?
That's the.
Let me give them that.
Yeah, that's for the calling.
Okay.
I wasn't even sure who was posting, who posted Berlin Police.
I mean, this one, I think we could almost call now. It sounds like it's.
I think schools already have a lot of them.
I just wasn't sure we could.
Not sure about Berlin-Burlston, but.
If they can do it, they can do it any other time. If you don't want to do it this hour.
Really?
Yeah, my kid's school's already canceled.
No, and I got, when I got on the train in Boston, they were, I don't know if I still have it. Yeah, I do. It's the notice of extremely reduced schedule. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. There are only seven trains back and forth along the Pittsburgh line the whole day tomorrow. So.
I think the snow is supposed to be a little drier, though, so hopefully, we won't have power outage.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it'll melt faster, too.
Well, on Thursday morning, I had a, I had a conference call with the general counsel, and we were talking about how to deal with one particular issue with a couple of other lawyers. And I said, well, you know, I think we need to do it with these four points. And the general counsel said, yeah, that's exactly it. You know, can you type those out and email those to me? I said, actually, I can't because I don't have power, and I'm just talking to you on, you know, on the cellphone. And the general counsel had to go off to take another call for about a minute or two. And I said to the other lawyers, because again, it went on between 8:00 and 9:00, and I hadn't been out to shovel yet on Thursday, I said, well, I'm about to go out and shovel some very, a lot of very heavy snow. So I'll tell you what, I'm going to write those four points on a piece of paper and leave them on the kitchen table. So if I don't make it back in, you guys will know where to find it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was heavy stuff, though, man.
It was heavy.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we, do we, do we have a final draft of this policy? Or are we going to?
It hadn't changed at all from the last one that I sent you.
Okay.
There was just that one little addition after I talked to the police chiefs, and then it was.
What, could you send it to me again?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Fair enough, I'm there?
Yep.
All right. And the next is firm closure notice from Deutsch Williams. The same council continuing, Elizabeth is continuing.
Liz, okay. I believe Liz is continuing.
And she's been our council for them. I mean, we haven't worked with a whole lot of others, right?
We, I mean, I've worked with her for a long time.
Right.
She is, seems to be taking all of the people, or most of the people, I guess.
That you've worked with.
That we've worked with previously. And I would highly recommend that we transfer files.
Yeah, I mean, this is special counsel for it.
Yes.
And I have no objection to that.
No.
Okay. All right, that I would accept a motion to execute the transfer of files direction.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And they indicate that rates will remain the same. So this is the second, is, you know, the continuation of the terms of engagement. Motion to approve that. Same people, same fees.
Second.
Yeah.
All right. Any further comments or questions?
No.
All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Let's see what the third one is. All right, so. I just want to see what the third, see if I can show that right down. Rate confirmation, change of representation. Oh, and transfer of files. Got it. So the last one is for the transfer of files. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Just a moment. Actually, I think this is just a second copy of the other, but it also deals with the transfer of files.
So moved.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I think only one of these larger ones needs to go to the Mary, but you'll have two just in case, okay? Just organizing myself here. I don't need your money. All right. Building inspector oversight management of wiring, electrical, and plumbing and gas
I think that we should take the wiring and plumbing inspectors and put them under our building inspector. I think that it would improve customer service, provide consistency of fee application. It'd give a better ability to sort of plan long-term for the department. And I think the oversight over there is probably a little too decentralized right now, particularly when you have Henry and Al are probably both coming close to retirement and new folks coming in. I think you're going to want a more centralized department.
And I presume this would be effective at the beginning of the next fiscal year. Is that correct?
We can't do it retroactive.
No.
No, but we still have a quarter of the year perspective. That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, Joe would want to look at the budget as it stands now and.
Okay, do we, and we need to look at what we need to do to give that effect, whether, in other words, whether we need to enter into agreements with them, whether there is.
Yeah, I don't.
A bylaw change or anything like that, and I don't know those.
I don't know, yeah.
You appoint them annually through May 31st.
Right.
My thought was, yeah.
We would appoint them with other conditions. And I just want to be sure there's no bylaw or something that, I don't think there is, but.
Need to check.
Yeah, I want to check that there isn't anything beyond that, but we have, I mean, we have time to do that between now and the time we make the appointment. Okay.
Any town council, or do we, can we figure this out?
Well, I think we just, we need to, I would like to just look at the bylaws because sometimes, you know, there's something in there and, you know, you never know what's in there until you encounter it sometimes, so.
Yeah, my initial thought was because we appoint them, we probably can say who they answer to, but yeah, that makes.
Yeah, no, and I think you're probably right, but we have time to sort that out. And so I think we want to look at the bylaws, be sure there's nothing. Maybe even ask them if they feel there's anything else beyond that, you know? Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, it might be appropriate to have a motion reflecting our resolution to take steps to do that effective July 1st.
Okay, make a motion to make.
Resolve to take, yes, to combine those with effect from, yeah, to do what's necessary to.
I second the blah, blah, blah.
So moved.
I think what I, we'll, we're resolved to take steps to facilitate.
Exactly.
The appointment of the wiring, electrical, and plumbing and gas inspectors to report to the building inspector effective July 1st, okay?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any further comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And lastly, on the quick agenda, we have a request for both the tax collector and the treasurer?
Yes. I was told that they both feel that it would be a good idea for us to appoint Dennis the tax collector on July 1st rather than maybe June, because it's cleaner at year-end for tax balance verification, and it also allows, okay, and is a better way for his benefits to end, for Richard's benefits to end. Refunds are delayed for those ending mid-month, but those ending on a month-end can be refunded, not deducted right away. This also allows any expenses incurred getting ready for an assistant bonding, et cetera, fall into FY '19, and we're not spending any funds in '18.
I would accept a motion to appoint the Richard Sardell, the incumbent tax collector, as acting tax collector through June 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
There's no other implications that we know of?
No.
Okay.
It's just tidier from a bookkeeping standpoint.
Right.
And I would note that this does not, this would then delay the effect of our appointment of the treasurer, but we've already voted that, so. And why don't we just add that, and delay the appointment of the treasurer as the tax collector until July 1st?
Yes.
Okay? We'll just do that.
Good.
Okay? All right, any other comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other business or reports?
Everything got snowed out this week.
Yes, everything did get snowed out. Oh, yeah, I got, yeah.
I did send an email to Dean Trans.
Sorry.
Dean Trans, yep.
Assistant Nathan Boudreau. I have not heard back. I threw out the days this Thursday and Friday, so I'm assuming that maybe that's not going to happen. But I'll let you know.
Great.
Okay.
All right. I sent out an inquiry to National Grid.
They're becoming our best friend lately, huh?
Yeah, right. Today, recognizing that, you know, they put the poll in there two weeks ago, and recognizing they've also, I think, had a few other things on their plate. But saying, you know, recognize all of this, can we get perhaps some assurances that at least this will be installed by the beginning of the last week of March, with the idea that then, you know, we could get the electrical contractor, you know, lined up with a couple weeks' notice, and we could maybe get this puppy running by April 1st.
Right.
Okay, so I haven't heard back, but that's what I asked for. Okay?
Good.
And I think other than that, and the letter which we spoke about, that's, and the, you know, from my point of view, the, you know, the call, you know, the call to talk about the closing worked fine. We actually, we talked a quarter to seven. We then deferred it until I figured it was like 1:00, and then made the decision at that point.
Yeah, which I thought made a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, and in the future, like, you could probably do it earlier, too, like, you could have done it this afternoon if you're available.
Yeah.
Which might be easier for you.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think.
Yeah, so that.
Especially for a first run when we hadn't even actually, like.
No, it worked out, it worked out fine.
Very well.
Just, you know, no sleeping in for me on, you know, a snowy morning. But other than that, that's fine. It's fine, I don't sleep in anyway. This.
You can't sleep in me, of course.
No, well, yeah, I'm sort of, I guess, I'd use my, I'd use my phone as the alarm clock last night, and it was about 25% charge when I went to bed, but I must have had a bunch of apps left open or something because it didn't go off, and I normally get up at 4:00 in the morning. And I got up right on the button at 5:00 in the morning, which was 4:00 just yesterday. So it was like.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, so right, right on the button. Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay. Mary, anything from you? Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.